Hey Bill.
Okay, this is the game of Asian football. And then, no, I'll call the announcement of the play.
No, we're supposed to fly. That's how we always do it. The first thing I need to.
But I should announce the meeting. This is a continuation. Good evening, everybody. This is a continuation of the meeting of July 18th. Everybody please rise for the pledges. Thank you, everybody. Roll call, please.
Ms. Martin? Mr. Nutter? Mayor Samaras?
Mr. Dakota? Mr. Doherty? Seven present.
All right, the first order, special order of business spotlight on scholastic summer reading. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Assistant Superintendent Robyn Desmond to share with you some great news relative to our children's reading in the district.
Thank you. This is more of an informational update. Scholastic used the great growth that the Lowell Public Schools showed in our summer reading of last summer as a highlight in their advertisements for summer reading this year. So what you have is just a quick overview of the fact that we implemented. They have an online system that allows students to go online and log in their reading minutes during the summer. And then that gives us a really accurate depiction of how many minutes and how many books children are reading over the summer, which helps us to compile that data so that when we do our spotlight in October, we have really accurate numbers. Along with this, we have organizations supporting some incentives for our children again this year. And I just thought this was a timely opportunity to talk about summer reading for our audience that's listening and also to apprise everyone of the fact that we are on the flyers as recognized for having a really strong program. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. All right, next we have permission to enter contracts. Madam Superintendent, any questions regarding these contracts?
These are two ongoing contracts that we have for the Accuplacer and score mediation at Lowell High School.
Any questions? I need a motion to approve permission to enter by Mr. Hoey, second by Mr. Dakota. Roll call.
Ms. Martin? Mr. Nutter? Mr. Dakota? Ms. Doherty? Seven yeas approved.
When I went to the motion sections, the first motion is 5.1 by Mr. Nutter. Motion to discuss, verify that all required summer transportation contracts are in place and funded. I need a second by Ms. Doherty.
I defer to the superintendent.
So I can assure you that all of our students are being presently transported to summer school. We are looking into some of the contracts to revise and amend those contracts to ensure that they are appropriate for the time span for our children.
Thank you. Need further question? All right, motion passes. Next, 5.2 by Mr. Nutter. Superintendent report why the past motions of school, supply school committee with copy of budget submitted to auditor on day it is submitted was ignored and not carried out considering the budget was submitted to auditor on June 22nd. I need a motion to accept.
I would like to withdraw that.
Thank you. 5.3 by Mr. Nutter. Superintendent explain the process and whose responsibility is to post school committee agendas and cancellation notices online and why there appears to be confusion surrounding this item lately. I need a motion to, second by Mr. Doherty, Mr. Nutter.
Again, I'll defer to the superintendent. It's a straightforward question. I know we had some issues going back and forth over what should be posted, but I think the superintendent has a response.
Thank you. The responsibility is the assistant to the superintendent, the confidential secretary, to post in collaboration with the city. And that's pretty much it.
So when she posts, it posts online, both on our website and also on the city's website, correct?
And they notify, at the same time, they notify Mr. Gary and all others.
Right, and so that those, the hard copy can then be posted outside as the city requires.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Next, by Mr. Nutter. Administration report if the school department has applied for the STEM equipment and supplies grant program with the Commonwealth and is not looking into, and if not, looking into applying. So standard, I need a second on that, Ms. Doherty.
And again, we go right to the superintendent.
of open work orders regarding doors and locks. And as they point out in their own study, given this era of increased awareness for school safety, this is just something that as a school committee, we need to press forward and, and work to ensure that, you know, ensure the parents that we are doing everything possible to make these schools safe as possible.
You're correct. And that was the information that was provided to the city council last night. And there was a, a request to have a facilities meeting in combination with the school committee so this matter could be discussed now and other matters pertaining to refitting all of the schools in the system. Mr. Nutter?
If I may, I believe the superintendent may know of, of a grant program that may be available to, to assist us with this?
Yes. Thank you. I have been in communication today and earlier, actually last Friday, with the city manager and her team relative to a grant, a COPS grant. We cannot be the lead agency on the grant. The city has to be the lead, but it is quite timely that these two, these two surveys, we, we have had recently in the last two years, our safety audit, and now the, the city has had this inspection as well. So although it is not very timely, it is due on Monday, but we have agreed as of today that I'm going to put a couple of people on it to write on our team, and the city is going to submit it. We could get up to 500,000 a year for several years. So keep your fingers crossed that our submission is accepted.
Mr. Hoi, you head.
Thank you, Mayor. Jerry threw a couple of curveballs at me again tonight because I was going to agree with him on motion number five, but he didn't want to go through with it. That was one that I definitely agree with. But this citywide facility study, I have to say, it was one of the best studies I've ever seen. I watched a meeting last night. It's going to cost us a lot of money to get caught up, and I just want to say this is another good motion right here. I wish we had a chief of police, you know, already here, but we have to wait on him. And if you remember, Mr. Nutter had a motion a while back about bringing the chief of police in front of us all, and it didn't happen. And I think if, it'd be nice if we can get a new one in the next two weeks. So I hope the city manager's listening to me. Thank you very much.
No, that's, that's a good idea. But the thing is, everybody's correct. There was, it was actually almost a 40-minute presentation last night, but the city council took the time to listen because there was a lot of information and it was accurate. Sometimes it's not the information you want to hear, but it was the information we had to hear. But I think the next is that now we'll start a working relationship with the school committee and the city council. Mr. Hoi?
Yeah, just one more quick thing. I, I have to commend Mr. Underwood because when I watched that woman give that presentation, I've seen so much of Mr. Underwood's work in that. So I think the school department and this, this school committee that I'm on, I think we should all be pretty happy about the way the city's moving forward with maintenance. So.
It's a long time.
It's a long way to go, but no, we've been fighting this for a long.
It's a long time coming, too.
We've been fighting this for a long time, and I'm really impressed by that woman last night, so I had enough. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have, I'm sorry, Ms. Martin?
If I could, just a quick question. So who's the ultimate funding source for this? I know you said it was the.
It's the federal government.
It is federal. Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions on that matter? Okay. Next, we have the reports of the superintendent. And the first report, six point one, is a response to Dominic Lay's motion of six twenty regarding impact of ESSA. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. With your permission, I'd ask Director of Special Education Jennifer McChrystal to come forward and share with you that information.
Hi. Good evening, and thank you. I do have hard copies for people who would prefer a hard copy. And I'd like to thank Donna Maluccio, who's my assistant, who's going to be the clicker tonight and help us get through this presentation. I would like to thank Mr. Lay for bringing this motion forward and then for agreeing for it to come to the committee as a whole, and this will be a very brief presentation and overview, but I think it's important that we have an understanding of this issue that is really an urban issue, that is impacting lots of urban districts. And I'd also like to thank Jane Moshe Candy and Mike Ortiz, who are the staff council that work in student support. They helped verify all of the laws and worked on a lot of the wording for this presentation. Every time I stand before you, I talk about the guiding principles of putting students and families first and building capacity in our staff and then doing our work transparently and creatively. And this issue is exactly one of the ways we need to really think outside the box because it's not only a district issue, it's really a state issue. And if we're not thinking about our students and families and helping us build our own internal capacity, but also the capacity of other districts in the state to ensure our students are getting what they need. The next piece is just a little bit background information. Special ed numbers change on a daily basis, and it's often difficult for us to give you a number exactly because on any given day it rises depending on the students that qualify. But we range about 12 to 15 percent of students that are special needs. What's really important for you to know is about 24 percent of our out-of-district students fall into the categories that I'm going to talk about tonight. That means those are students that we are not programmatically responsible for. We are fiscally responsible for them, but we are not their educational decision makers. So these are Lowell students, and somebody else is helping make their educational decision, which makes it very hard for us to predict what the cost is going to be. And although there's some circuit breaker reimbursement, it's often not substantial compared to the amount of money that we're paying. And I think the other thing I just wanted to highlight for you, because I know the word "out-of-district" has lots of meanings, and it gets put out there. So there's a difference between an out-of-district placement, which is when we, the school system, write an IEP for a student and they are receiving services outside of our district. So we operate three-day schools now in Lowell, the Laura Lee, LeBlanc, and the day school on Broadway. Those schools are equivalent to out-of-district schools in their programming, but they're in-district schools. When we say out-of-district transportation, it could mean three very different things. One is if it's in an IEP, we're providing transportation. So for students who go to school in another community in an out-of-district school, we're providing the transportation from them, from their home in Lowell to the school. But students are also placed out of Lowell due to DCF or because of general home issues. Those students could be general ed or special ed, and we're paying the transportation. So for example, as long as it's less than an hour, we could have a student on a bus from Methuen to come to school at the Shaughnessy, and we're paying for that. We could also have students that are homeless that have moved out of Lowell because they need to have housing, and we're transporting them back to Lowell to come to school. All of that is out-of-district transportation because they're coming from out of Lowell, but it's not necessarily special ed related. We're only fiscally responsible for the special education students who have it in their IEP. And most students who receive IEP services don't receive special education transportation. So it's just important to know that it really is a special ed and a general education issue. So this comes down to these laws, legislation, and advisory. The first two are laws. The third is a regulation, and the last is an advisory. And I'm going to talk a little bit just about how those impact. I gave you a little overview in the memo I sent you, and I'm more than happy to provide more information if you need it, but it's just to give you a sense. So the first thing is group homes, and that comes under ESSA. And that is when DCF determines that a student can no longer live in their home, and they place them in a group home. That's been around for a really long time. Under ESSA, they've changed the definition of what a group home is, and that's listed here for you to read. But they've also added a best interest meeting, which means DCF should be holding a meeting with Lowell and whatever community the student's being placed in and say where it is, is it in the student's best interest to go to school? We've all been struggling with figuring out how to do that and what it's going to look like, and under the direction of Superintendent Durkin, we've had lots of meetings with DCF to try to figure it out. But ultimately, what happens is that kids could be placed in group homes in communities that don't have services to meet their educational needs. So for example, we have two little guys who were in our in-district programs. They attended one of our regular K-8 schools. For reasons outside of the school, they were removed from their homes and placed in group homes in Western Mass. The community that their group home is in does not have the substantially separate program that they need. Because we are not the programmatic district anymore, they've written those two students out of district. They are now collaborative students. We pay the collaborative bills and the transportation for those guys. So we've now changed their educational setting, moved them away from their general education peers, simply because of their living situation. That's when I talk about our guiding principles of putting students and families first. We need to be aware of what we're doing to these kiddos as they move to group homes. And often what happens is these group homes are in communities that don't have the same services Lowell has. And as you can imagine, kids that are in group homes often have behavioral issues or trauma histories. And so we've been fighting a fight. This is where the building capacity comes in. I spend a lot of time on the phone with the state arguing about least restrictive because I have a fundamental issue when a Lowell student is general education in Lowell and moves to another community and automatically becomes special education out of district. And there is nothing we can do about it. We're at the table, but we're not programmatic, we're just fiscal. And when we look at all of the research of Hare and Hernandez that tell us the farther we remove them from general ed, the worse the trajectory. Again, we're letting one thing we need to solve drive another thing. Bigger than the district, bigger than the state, it really needs to be looked at. The next section is the homeless under McKinney-Vinto, and student support under the direction of Superintendent Durkin has worked very, very hard on making connections and supporting because, again, this isn't a special education issue. It's a general education issue. Some of the students are special ed. And what I'd like you to see on this is what's at the bottom. This is what we struggle with. There's no time limit for being homeless. So we have several families that have been living in homes in other communities, and they have been homeless for years. And those communities have put the students out of district because they're programmatic and we are fiscal. And again, it's an issue. When kids are homeless, I understand we need to find a place for them to live. We just need to do it in conjunction with their education to make sure we're doing the right thing. And I know that we've worked really, really hard at making sure that we're, we're working with the state agencies. We're fighting to make sure we know what's going on with the kids, and we know some districts are telling kids, oh, you can't register here, stay in Lowell. Now we're funding the transportation. Or they're refusing to pay their share of the transportation cost, and we've been working on that very hard. But it's something we all need to keep in mind. And if a student's homeless, we've had this happen where they're living in a shelter. If their educational needs aren't being met, they start acting out behaviorally in the shelter, and then all of a sudden, we need even more restrictive placement. So again, we just have to be conscious of it. And the other piece that is important to remember on the next slide is, as we've talked about, Mr. Nutter, with the dyslexia legislation, this is an unfunded mandate. No one said you're going to fund all these students and make sure they can be in the appropriate school, and we're going to give you a whole bunch of money. There's not the extra money for this, so we just need to be aware of that. The next slide on foster homes, this is new. And this is a huge problem for us because in the past, when a student went into a foster home, they became the fiscal and programmatic responsibility of the district they were living in. So we stopped keeping track of them because they were no longer Lowell students. As of July 1st, it changed. We are now fiscally responsible for those students. So we need, we've been working really hard to develop a list so we know when we get bills from other communities that these are our kids. So we need to start rethinking because maybe we need to start saying to kids who get in foster homes, we're going to bash you back to Lowell because we have the programs. But it's another layer we just need to make sure we're aware of because that changes our, the students, our students just grew again, and we, we need a system to keep track of that. The next slide talks about the advisory, and the advisory gets a little bit tricky in the sense that it's a student who already has a day school placement. So they could be at Crest or Valley or Saint Anne's, but they also could be at the Laura Lee or the LeBlanc or the day school. DCF needs to change their living situation, so they ask us to enact the advisory, which means the student then becomes residentially placed and goes to school where they are placed. And although we can fight it, it's, it's a very difficult process, and we've seen a significant increase in those students. So we've had this year alone at least one kiddo from our new day school and two from the LeBlanc and one from the Laura Lee that this happened to. So we were funding them under our funding mechanism for just kids who attend our day schools, and now we're paying either half of the residential program if they don't have a day school rate or the day school rate. And again, for me, when I think about students, are they really getting the skills they need? Because eventually, they're going to be turning 18, and they're going to come back to the community. So we better make sure we're teaching them and that we have productive citizens coming back to Lowell that have all the skills that they need. So as I've said to you all many, many times, when Lowell invests in Lowell, we win. And this isn't necessarily something that throwing money at the problem is going to make it go away. It's really about having conversations and making it a systems issue. And we've taken a lot of action steps already as a district, and it truly is as a district. It is not just special ed or student support. It is not just special ed or student support or transportation or finance. It's everybody coming together. So we've been working on updating our coding and tracking systems. We've outreach to other communities. That's the building capacity piece where some districts don't really like getting phone calls from me because I argue least restrictive and I want our kids to come back to Lowell if they're going to be placed out when they were general ed, when they left Lowell. We're working very hard with DCF and some of the conversations with DCF is if they can tell us kids that are struggling, we might be able to help. The LeBlanc was devastated when one of their students was placed out of the advisory because that was the only place that was stable for that student. And they said if we had known she was struggling, we would have worked with her to see if we could keep her in our house. So we're trying to partner with DCF to figure out what are the students we should be working on. And we've had real regular meetings and Superintendent Durkin was at our last meeting where we're really trying to update and make sure we've got all of these pieces together. But there's still a lot that needs to be done in terms of expanding our own capacity. And one of the things that I'd just like to take the opportunity to say is we're working very hard to bring students back in district, thanks to all of you and your support. And a few months ago, Mr. Frisch had asked us if we could bring back 10 more students for the, for our new day school next year. And we have 14 families that have already agreed to start with us in the fall, which couldn't have been done in our old location because we didn't have enough seats. But that's really thanks to the support of all of you and the amazing staff that made it a really easy sell to families. They were thankful we considered them to come back. And as we continue to build our own internal capacity, we now need to do the outreach for these other kiddos that need the support through other communities. I think we need to look at the increasing funding and one of the things also with that is the funding mechanism for disabilities. The state only gives us money for students who have a special education code, but they don't take into consideration what services does a dyslexic student need versus a, a student who has autism and what are those service differences? And also, we really need to look at if kids are gonna be placed in group homes or foster homes, those communities should have the programs the kids could access. And I also know that people here have said that, that we should consider looking at that lawsuit and, and joining with other communities. So I know I went a little bit over my time, but I just wanted to really say this is a preview. It's a very complicated, complex situation that interacts between general ed and special ed across all departments. But I think it was important for you all to have an understanding of the impact because you are all such great advocates for students. And if you need more information, I would be more than happy to provide it as I know Jane Morjekandi and Mike Ortiz would be happy to address the laws or anybody else from student support or finance. So thank you, Mr. Lay for bringing it forward and thank you all for listening.
Thank you for this report. It's a great report. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, so one of the key differentials that I look at is really the idea that, and I don't pretend that the circuit breaker works. But it is at least something.
It is. It is at least something.
And there's nothing that you can correlate with this on the homelessness or the, the DCF placements. I mean, there's no mechanism, correct me if I'm wrong, that would give us even a portion of that back. So it's just flat, okay.
Yep.
Which is definitely an area we need to, we need to spend some time and attention with.
Yes.
And I think, you know, for your last point, I would, if, with the support of the committee, I would like to make a motion that we request that the administration develop a proposal about our joining the lawsuit. I think it's something that we've all discussed in various ways and our, I certainly feel that we're in favor of it and wanna be part of that, recognizing the impact that it's having specifically on Lowell students. And I do think that this is, I mean, this is a gateway city issue. It is, and we need to be part of that, we need to be part of that endeavor because I think we really are, along with our other kind of sister cities, really bearing the brunt of these expenses. And I think at the end of the day, and again, I look at the, certainly from the homelessness perspective as well as the DCF one, in many cases, it is the best, you know, opportunity for a kid to stay in our district. It is the absolute best chance for them to maintain that stability in that one corner of their life. When everything else is, is in a state of upheaval, the school can be the one place where they're safe and, and can continue to make progress. So I, you know, I definitely support that, but the idea is we need to have a funding mechanism in place that allows us to provide that service. So I do think that, I mean, across all four of the groups that the lawsuit is looking at, certainly the special ed and, and these issues here with homelessness and also the bilingual education are all things that we need to be part of and that if I would, that's my motion. Go ahead.
How do you want?
Go ahead, someone second.
Would you like to restate that motion before we second it? Could you, could you restate it?
Requesting that the administration prepare for us information on Lowell becoming a party to the existing lawsuit regarding funding through the, the state legislature.
Seconded by Mr. Lay. Mr. Lay, you all set? Do you have any questions, Mr. Lay?
Oh, just a short comment about, to Ms. McChrystal for hanging on for the past couple of meetings. We've been postponing, postponing until today, so finally we have a chance to talk about it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hoy?
I just have a few things. I, I'm gonna support that motion by Ms. Martin, but I think, I'm not sure about the numbers, but I know the governor had an issue of about a thousand, at least a thousand families living in hotels all over the area like Burlington and the kids go to school in Dorchester. And now I think he's got it down to single digits. But DCF, over the past few years, they can't be trusted. And I, I think joining this suit with Worcester and Brockton's a very good idea. But again, they're coming to Lowell for a reason, you know? I see it around the Pine School. We have a lot of people with handicaps that I didn't see for years and it's because we're doing a great job and I think the staff is what really needs to be, we need to talk to the staff, let them know how great of a job they're doing. And I just think we should be careful at DCF. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Nutter?
Ms. McChrystal, do you know how many homeless students we have?
I would defer to the superintendent.
So at this time, we have documented well over 700, I think it's close to 776 students that are documented and those are the ones that, and so at this time, we have home visitors going out and checking their status and phone calls and everything.
I, I just wanted the public, I, I had heard that number was in the last month and that is such a high level of, of students in this district who are homeless and the services that, that we provide are unbelievable for that large number of, of students.
No, but it's, you're correct, it's a very serious problem. I do recall when we were creating the lyceum at the high school with Mr. Topio, his next venture he wanted to do was to create Dawns because the thing is, the homeless situation was serious, has been serious for a long time. And that's, I see sometimes in, we'll see school systems doing things like that, but creating residential living for many of its students. It's an interesting time, but thank you for that report. I need, I'm sorry.
I just had one quick question. Sorry, Jennifer. In terms of the responsibility, I know you're saying that with the homeless students, we can maintain fiscal responsibility over the course of years. Is that true also for DCF-involved students?
Absolutely.
That there's no end date for that? Even once they're placed in another district, we go through another census, they should be being counted on that other district's census, but there's still, we're still.
If they're in a group home and their parents' last residence or where they lost custody of the students or where they passed away was Lowell, Lowell is fiscally responsible. And so, and now it also, with the change as of July 1st, it now also counts for group homes. So if the.
The foster and group homes?
Foster and group homes. If the parents move and they've retained custody, then it would shift. But as long as the parents have custody and live in Lowell or last resided in Lowell when they became homeless, that is still Lowell's responsibility.
And there's no end date?
Right, there is no end date.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Hoy?
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanna add one more thing when I seen this. Thank you for your report, by the way. And the past mayor, Mayor Kennedy, he worked very hard on this day school issue and to know we got 14 children coming back into the system makes me feel really good. But he also left you with a job that come November, you, you might have to sing a song with Ms. Martin because you remember we raised some money for the homeless people? And Mayor Kennedy left that one on you to continue that, so we're gonna have to think about that one too, okay?
A lot of money.
Okay, thank you.
He did a good job. No, I mean, but those are things that we should do. But I'd like to have the clerk read the motion again and have a roll call. I'd like Ms. Martin to state her motion.
On the lawsuit?
Yes.
So requesting that the administration prepare for us a recommendation as to Lowell, the Lowell School Committee, joining the existing lawsuit regarding appropriate, I'm gonna say the foundation formula funding, it's the same thing, with the existing litigants of, of Worcester and Brockton.
Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoy?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Next, report on motions. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is your regular report, status of the report on motions. I would call to the school committee's attention that we do have quite a preponderance of outstanding motions. I would ask them to entertain that if I were to provide to them between now and the next meeting, a, a packet of these motions with an additional two columns, one with recommend to, to dismiss and then one with priority items because with several new administrators coming on board, I wanna make sure that we prioritize those motions in a fashion that is responsive to you to the best of our ability. So I present that to you for consideration.
Mr. Nutter?
I, I would make a motion to adopt the recommendation of the superintendent for the next meeting.
Seconded by Mr. Dakota. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have list of eligible teachers. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, this is our regular list of eligible teachers who are certified and meet the requirements for hiring.
Any questions? Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So this list of teachers, they're just, they're not being hired yet, they're just available for us to, to hire if we need, right?
That's correct. They have the appropriate certifications and all the documentation.
Thank you. We, we got their list because they applied or they, how do we know them?
Yes, they have applied.
Okay.
They submitted a JDA. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions? Thank you. Next is personnel report. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, this is the regular personnel report that details retirements, resignations and new hires and promotions. I have been in communication with our human resource director, Ms. Mulligan, and she is, will be providing us some ongoing status reports. Even since this report, there have been a number of new hires of key administrative positions and we'll be sharing that with you at the next meeting.
Any questions? I need a motion to accept the reports of the superintendent from six one to six four as a report of progress by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Lay. Thank you. We have the election of the acting secretary to the school committee. Committee members must vote by saying the name of Janine Durkin. So I need a motion to elect Ms. Durkin as the acting secretary by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
A roll call, I'm sorry, you have to give the name.
Janine Durkin?
Mr. Nutter?
Janine Durkin.
Mayor Samaras?
Janine Durkin.
Mr. Dakota?
Janine Durkin.
Ms. Dougherty?
Janine Durkin.
Mr. Hoy?
Janine Durkin.
Mr. Lay?
Present.
Six, um, for Janine Durkin, one present.
Okay. Next, to authorize the mayor on behalf of the school committee to retain an independent auditor for the purpose of performing audits for the Lowell Public School Department finances. Madam Superintendent, do you want to?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been in communication with one auditing firm thus far and they have offered to develop a contract for the committee's consideration. I can reach out to additional firms if that's the wish of the committee and we can go forward with an RFP if that is something that the committee wishes.
What's the wish of the committee? Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Understanding that we don't need to do a full-blown RFP and a, and a full-blown bid process, but I do think it's no additional work on our part to, whatever we've provided this initial firm with, to find at least two other viable firms and share the same material with them, asking for their response. There could be a situation where they're not interested. I mean, that could certainly be the case, but at least we have done our due diligence in trying to get the information out there to multiple, multiple options and then we can have some, some opportunity to consider different, different packages to decide what is in the best interest and will, will really get us the information we need from this, from this audit. I, if the maker of the motion would take that as a friendly emotion, a friendly emotion, friendly, a friendly addition, that would be.
Yes. Seven. Any?
Can we, can we put a, a time? I just think that time is of the essence here for a number of issues, so can we plan on, you know, getting this done within a week and, and coming back, maybe having another special meeting in a week to authorize this? I, I just don't think we can afford to wait two more weeks before we hire someone. We need to, you know, really have this budget ready to go for our students.
From the solicitor's office, I mean, do you see this as possible to, be able to speed up the process, to expedite the process actually?
Yeah, I don't see that this would be a problem in submitting proposals, extending, you know, some communication and when you call the special meeting is, I guess, in your hands, but you could certainly do that.
Okay. All right. We'll give you a report to the committee. Mr. Hoy?
Yeah, I'd just like to say I would support what Ms. Martin says because we are in a lot of executive sessions lately because of not, because of going out, without going out to bid. So I think the good practice that Ms. Martin's saying is what we should do. We should RFP it, send it out for bidding process because that's why we're in a lot of problems now. Because I thought we had the right to go out and hire someone without a bid and we did that, but it seems like it was an issue. So I think Ms. Martin's right right now. I think we should go out and do it the right way and so we don't have any more problems. Thank you.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree also, but I think maybe if we put a time limit on how long to wait to get. I agree also, but I think maybe if we put a time limit on how long to wait to get feedback in terms of who would be interested in doing it, if we put a finite duration for that, so if we can add, like, make it a week, is that unreasonable, or do we, can we add that on there as a friendly amendment? Thank you.
Hey, we'll have a roll call. I'm sorry, we need a second on your, I'd like Mr. Hoy to second it. No. Ms. Doherty, okay. So a roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoy?
Uh, no.
Mr. Lay?
No.
Five yeas, two nays, motion passes.
Okay. Next, we have a motion to approve the authorization for payment stipend for Jason McReaven. I need a motion to accept this, but before that, any discussion regarding this?
Yes. Thank you. I've been in the Roger School personally, I had to go there four different times, because I was one of those type of students that needed discipline back in those days, but this principal, I have witnessed three different times I've been in that school, and before, about a year and a half ago, when they had to get the school ready, two years ago, maybe, I never seen anybody work as hard as that principal. I know you got a question when you spend money on certain people, but this, this guy has done more, maybe not quite as much maintenance help as Mr. Underwood, but this guy deserves his extra money, his stipend for what he did, and I want to be on record of saying that. He deserves every dime he got, and he's done a great job at the Roger School. Thank you.
Mr. Nutter, then, Ms. Doherty.
Mr. Hoy may find this hard to believe, but I agree with him. This is, this is no, my concern with this was the process, the way it was handled. There was no, you know, we talk about bids, there was no request for quo, there was nothing brought to this school committee or the last school committee asking for permission to hire, there was no funding mechanism in place to pay anybody $82 an hour to oversee construction area. However, this principal, at the request of the superintendent, responded, worked for those days, and as much as the process was incorrect, this gentleman deserves to be paid for his work.
So what we have here? Mr. Hoy? Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor, I'd just like to make a comment. My problem with this is the fact that we had a principal overseeing construction of four classrooms for 10 days at a cost of $6,590. I think it was misspent money. I think that you could have had somebody from our maintenance crew, or, you know, it just, and it's no fault of the principal, I think he's an excellent principal, I agree with my colleagues to the left, and I am going to support paying him, because I believe he took the time and was there, you know, in good faith at a request, but I think it's another example of, you know, the incompetent leadership that we had that has lost us money that we can't afford, that we could use for the purposes of educating our students. We should not have had a principal who's not got a background in construction overseeing four classrooms being renovated for 10 days. It just, it's not logical, it makes no sense.
Mr. Dakota, do you have your hand? No, that's the whole way.
Thank you, Mayor. I have, the only issue I have really is, the first time I was on the school committee, Ed Reform was only, I think, two years old, I was on there in 95, I think Ed Reform is in 1993. And under Ed Reform, the superintendent has the power to do a lot of these things that we don't like. He tries to hire certain people, and some of us on this committee don't like it. I think that's what the problem is with the school committees nowadays, we can't get used to Ed Reform. We want to make our, we want to, there's some people here that want to hire people, they want to do the, look at HR, we're going to be talking about that pretty soon. I think that's what's wrong with the school committee. We got to remember, we don't have the power that we had, and we're trying to get it back. It's not going to happen. So I just want that to say, I don't think the superintendent mismanaged as much as maybe some of the people around him trying to bring him down, so we'll see how it turns out.
Thank you, Your Honor, just one final comment. I did not serve on a school committee prior to Ed Reform, so I'm not privy to those experiences of wanting to hire people. What I want the leader of our system to do is follow our HR policies and hire people who have the qualifications and the expertise to do the job that we're hiring them to do. That's all I want, and that's all I've asked for.
Ms. Martin, then, Mr. Dakota?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. To some of the points being raised, I believe Mr. Hoy is the only individual who had the opportunity to serve prior to Ed Reform, because it had been in place before, even before I had come on. I think the key thing that we want to focus on, because I agree with all of my colleagues in that this individual was asked to do something and did it. So, I mean, there's no, I would, you know, I would hold him blameless, we need to, this, we need to hold up our end of the bargain, and this principal needs to be paid for the time he spent doing this work. In terms of wanting to get involved with the hiring, I think it's pretty clear that our concerns lay around the process. I think for those of us who serve, we recognize that at every meeting, we sign off on a permission to enter. That is established so that any contract that is entered into for more than $5,000 needs to come before this body to be approved. That is a standard operating procedure. This is outside that, we never saw this to approve it. Again, it happened in a previous fiscal year, where now, again, it is inappropriate, but we are forced to use FY '19 funds to pay for an FY '18 bill. Inappropriate fiscal practice. Thirdly, I will say, the documentation that we were provided with has no signatures and does not look like a fully executed document. So if there, I'm assuming that there is somewhere in the, in the materials, something that was actually signed by the superintendent, by this principal, and not, you know, just a document that has no legal standing. So if that doesn't exist, it should, so if we can make sure that that happens, that's great. I'm willing to move forward with that as a caveat, saying that, you know, that the committee can approve the expenditure outside of the traditional permission to enter process, but that we would require that there be a fully executed legal document documenting exactly what this payment is for. So those were the inappropriate, you know, kind of process problems that this situation has revealed.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In terms of qualifications, we don't know if he was qualified for that, in fact, he could possibly have been qualified, so we don't know that. Secondly, I think there was, if I recall, that there was a certain urgency to get that prepared and ready for us to occupy that building and bring students into that STEM academy. So I think that, again, faced with the situation with the public works in the city being spread out so thinly in the city, to not have enough people to do that work, I think that, you know, that could explain why it went that route, but that's, I'm just throwing that out there, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Hoy.
I just want to make one thing clear, I didn't, I came on the school committee in 1995, Ed Reform was about two years, I believe it was 93. And I'm not saying just this school committee, since that time, we've had issues with trying to keep an HR director. And it's about 2,700 jobs, and people don't like the superintendent, really, putting, like, in a high school leader. He don't, they don't like it when he puts an HR director, and that's, that's an issue we got to fix. We have to try to realize that the superintendent, that's what you do, you try to let them run a business, and if you don't like it, we'll get rid of the superintendent. When the contract was up, that's the way I feel, and it's that simple, for me. It's that simple for me.
If you'll allow me, just an observation, the concern I have is, we have, I recognize a decent principal whose name is being bandied about, I don't like that, but the issue is, he was hired without a contract. That's problematic for me. I believe there was a memorandum of understanding after the work was done, but all I'm looking for is, Mayor, is to ensure that we use what the city ordinances require us to do, also good, sound business practice. So take away opinions of this, that, that really has no standing with me at this particular point. What has standing with me is, from this point on, we have to ensure that if we hire a principal or principals or whatever, they're hired with a contract for us that states why they're being hired and the work expectation, especially temporary contracts, or it's a memorandum of understanding, something that a negotiator can deal with. That's my concern, I mean, good business practice. Any further discussion? Madam Superintendent?
So I, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to alert the committee that I have sent out a correspondence to all of our principals, some of them are away on vacation, and I'm certain that they're, I'm hoping that they're taking the time not to read my emails right now, but I did get to alert them, to ask them if they did have any such agreements for this coming summer months, so that we could be aware of that. And thus far, I only had correspondence from one principal who is currently conducting science camp, and this is something that has been done for the last five years, it's also an extension of, you know, exciting work for our students, 80-plus students are registered to begin next week, so that is something outside their regular, and they're putting time sheet in for that.
I mean, this, the committee should be made aware of what expenditures do occur, and that's, it's called information, and we, it's the best way we help facilitate the needs of this system. Okay, any further discussion, this matter? Okay, Madam Superintendent, so you'll take care of this stipend for?
We have to vote.
Okay. I need a motion to accept by Mr. Nutter and seconded by Mr. Hoy. A roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoy?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Okay, thank you. Next, Lowell High School TV funding for Lowell High School TV production studio. Need a motion to accept the funding for Lowell High School TV production studio by, as we, okay. The issue is, do we have the money to establish, reestablish the Lowell High School TV production studio? Madam Superintendent?
So at this time, there, the two positions that were in the budget were, if you look at the detailed notes, the notes indicate that those two positions were to be taken out of the Comcast funds, and I have been in communication with the city manager, and that is not something that was agreed to, so at this time, there is not money in our budget for those two positions.
Mr. Nutter?
I would like to make a motion that we move this to the August meeting. You know, we have to go through the audit, we know we're receiving some additional state funds, and maybe when all this is done, and to give the superintendent and her staff the time to go through the budget and see what we have, we just get some grant funding information recently that may play a part in helping to find some other ways to move money around, so I'd like to make a motion that we, we hold off on this until the August meeting.
Second, by Ms. Martin. Roll call. I'm sorry, discussion on this?
Thank you. Certainly happy to support this motion. I would like to ask, because I, and I recognize there are a lot of balls in the air right now, but come our August meeting, which will be taking place, does anyone have the date of that? 15th, okay. So that gives us three weeks in that area, a ton of time, I know. But what I would like to see is, not only this issue, we have a number of different issues that are in play right now, and I would want to see us include the issue of the career counselor, guidance counselor at the high school, the issue of the library media aides, I don't want to make decisions on these positions until we have, A, the final word from the state, I know that there's a lot of individuals who feel that this 1.1 is a done deal, it's not, it's not done until the governor signs off on it, so it's not something we can bank on, though I do think it's looking, it's looking positive for us, but by that point, we should have absolute information on that, we'll have the information on, on the changes in some of the grant funding that may be, may be helpful, but I want to make sure that those are, in my mind, the top three things we want to be discussing come August 15th of the kind of, the hangovers from our previous budget discussion that we haven't been able to get back to yet, but that I know the committee as a whole wants to get back to.
Nutter, then, Mr. Lay.
Just to, again, to make everybody aware, my understanding is that we had, we had put some money into the suspense account for, was going to be a coordinator or principal position for the Sullivan School, however, my understanding is now we may actually need to fund that position. Correct, Ms. Durkin?
We do have several referrals for the alternative program pending. I've asked our school leaders to complete the required documentation, but also to assess the children when they come back to school, because lots can happen over the summer, and children grow and mature, and we want to make sure that we're providing the best placement for the children, so, but there are some referrals pending at this point.
Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and I agree with Mr. Nutter about postponing this motion until the next meeting, but I just want to hear from superintendent whether that postpone would cause any issues with the school opening in late August, and whether that's good for you.
So I think we, I feel that we'd be irresponsible to make these decisions now without knowing specifically what our funding, you know, stream is, so once we get that, it'll give us enough time. I think the committee, in due diligence, did a great job of creating the priority list, so I can bring that, that priority list, and I will add the other two television positions to that list for your consideration for the August 15th meeting, and then we can move from there.
Further discussion? Motion passes, okay. Next, we have guidance on the search for an interim school business administrator. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. I would ask Attorney Hall if he would, with your permission, to come forward and share the specifics of the appointment.
Mayor, if I may, the Dr. Kalafawi conducted some interviews, there was one viable candidate, but in discussions with Superintendent Durkin, we thought it was appropriate to ask the committee for guidance if they wanted it re-advertized to try to get more applicants, or if they wanted to provide guidance on what potential salary and benefit parameters would be before we went forward. That's the status for the consideration of the committee.
Mr. Hoy?
Do you, what did we have show up, only one, one person?
Two people interviewed, Mr. Hoy. One was, I would say, was a very qualified candidate.
Does that happen to be a female?
Yes.
I'd hire her in a minute.
But do they understand it's an interim position?
I just wanted to say that.
Yes, Mayor. It was relayed, given the guidance of Dr. Kalafawi, that it would be till July, sorry, June 30th, and then the contract, or the position would end, and that the committee intended to advertise for permanent in the meantime.
Any further discussion? Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I do think this is a very challenging situation, and I would ask if the superintendent would like to share, I appreciate, appreciate, you know, having the updated information, kind of, what- I appreciate, you know, having the updated information, kind of what our best course is moving forward.
Thank you. So as Attorney Hall mentioned, we did interview two candidates, and this one candidate did have, you know, was very competent and had some knowledge of the school district, our systems, and, you know, there are no other candidates at this time. I have reached out in the past few days to various organizations to see if there are any other candidates for our consideration. And as of tonight, prior to coming here, I had no other information of candidates, so my, my feeling is that we need someone to support us, and we need the person as soon as possible.
Mr. DeCoto?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we need to vote on approving this selection, because I think we need to be considerate of our new superintendent here to take some of that burden off of her shoulders at this point, and if, obviously, they've done their due diligence in checking her credentials. They're saying that she's highly qualified, so I say, my move that we accept that recommendation.
A second?
If I may briefly, at this meeting, it couldn't be accepted. It would have to be put on an agenda where the candidate's qualifications and the potential contract would have to be presented to the committee and the public, so it can't be acted on tonight.
Could we possibly tie that then in with the special meeting, you know, talking about hiring, getting it down to three firms, and then setting up a special meeting?
Well, I was going to state, I mean, there's, the superintendent's faced with a lot of issues, and I think we can't wait till the 15th, so why don't we see if we get, when we get the information, and we'll call for the special meeting, and I'll have the committee polled as to when they can meet, and we'll, but there's an expectation, say, within the next week and a half that we'll be called acting together again. Mr. Houghey?
I'm not trying to make a joke of what I said about, was it a woman? I know who it is. There's no secrets in this city. I know exactly who it is, and it's a very qualified person. I think most of her training might have came from Jay Lang. So I think, from what I'm hearing, the rumbles on the street, and I don't want to put her name out there or where she works, but...
Please don't.
I won't, but I think, I think we got to move on something really quick, and I think you might already have the person we need, so I hope we don't make a mistake. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. DeCoto?
I withdraw that motion then.
Okay. Thank you. But Madam Superintendent, does this fit with what your needs, meet your needs at this point?
I wouldn't, I'm, I'm wondering if we could expedite that meeting and not wait the additional week until we have the auditor information, if the committee so, and I could have the committee polled?
If we, probably not next week, but maybe the following week?
I believe we, there is an urgency here. I think we need, even if we have the meeting just for this, it won't take long, you know, maybe next Tuesday or Wednesday?
Tues, uh...
There's no City Council meeting?
That's correct. Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Martin.
Because we have the benefit of multiple attorneys in the room, in the past, I believe that the committee has been able to take a vote, empowering a subcommittee to make an ultimate decision, so that if this committee took a vote to say, we empower the finance subcommittee to make a final decision on this, on this matter, you'd only need to worry about getting three people in a room to make that vote, which may make it easier to move forward. Because, again, I agree that I would like to get this done as quickly as possible, but just as a mechanism that may make it easier.
I understand Ms. Durkin's concern. The Solicitor's Office, I mean, what's your, give us an opinion, Rachel?
Mr. Hall? Do you see any issue with us doing that?
I think it would be best for the whole committee to vote. I certainly think the finance subcommittee could do negotiations with the candidate, but I would say ultimately it should come back for the committee's...
I'd prefer that. I really would prefer that.
So can I make a motion that we have a special meeting on Tuesday evening?
Tuesday or Wednesday? What's, Tuesday or Wednesday?
Yes, the 31st.
See what's available, the Tuesday or Wednesday?
We have to see what's available as far as availability of the room, this room here. Yeah, doesn't really matter, so...
We don't have anyone to film. I don't think we have anyone to film it live.
Yeah, we can do it live.
We can do that. I, myself, I'd prefer Wednesday. I mean, do we want to go Tu, how many want to go Tuesday? Okay, if you won't be here. Tues, Monday, Tuesday's, I'd go for the Tuesday or Wednesday.
Tuesday? Tuesday.
Okay.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, work for you, Ms. Doherty? And I'm coming from Marlboro. 6:30?
6:30.
6:30.
Okay.
And, Miss Mayor, would you let us know where, whether this room's available or the conference room?
Give you a second.
Second, right, by Ms. Martin. Thank you. Madam Superintendent, is that okay with?
That works perfectly fine. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Move to adjourn? I'm sorry, Mr. Houghey.
That's okay. If something happens, we can always get Gignac to come and help us. I just figured I'd throw that in there. So he's helped us before, so if we need some help, we can get Gignac. Thank you.
Mr. DeCoto, you had your hand? Okay, motion to adjourn by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Lay. Thank you.